Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight, we're in a committee meeting. And it is June 13th, 2016. Before we go into our committees, we do have the second and final hearing for a Community Development Block grant, sometimes referred to as CDBG. This is funding that's available to us through the Small Cities Program. It helps us with projects in low to moderate income neighborhoods. And in the past, has done a variety, has helped us with a variety of projects. I think, I believe on Lancaster Street and other areas of town. This time, the city administration has three potential projects that they've mentioned. One of these is for the Kimes Water Reservoir that's on the south side of town. One of them is on Jefferson Avenue. And the last project potentially under consideration is the West Union sidewalks that could be incorporated into some other improvements being made in the, on the West Union Street. As Director of Public Works, Andy Stone, explained to us last Monday night, the Kimes Reservoir project is very big. And as we understand, the Community Development Block program, it's better suited to a small, discreet project. So we'll likely try and incorporate several forms of funding into the Kimes Reservoir for later. And of the two remaining then, the Jefferson Avenue improvements and the West Union sidewalks, the, I think the city administration's preference is to do the improvements to the West Union sidewalks. And our Service Safety Director, Paula Varan Mosley, is here. I just want to confirm that, that the West Union Street is, at this point, the top project that we're considering?
It is, and it aligns itself with its, your pedestrian master plan. And we've had requests for a number of years to get greater connectivity in that portion of it.
Okay. And this would be putting in sidewalks in a portion where there are not sidewalks now. So it would be a new, new improvement to infrastructure here. Yes, Councilmember Pappy?
Thank you. There is also a new housing project that's going in right there that is for folks with disabilities. I know the Athens Photographic Project has also moved right over there. So it just seems to me like this is an excellent place to try to, to expand and improve access in, on West Union.
Okay. Councilmember Reisner?
I just want to remind everybody, this is a public meeting, and that the audience should sign the, sign-in sheet.
And if we do have any comments from those members in the audience, if you'd like to make any comments about this, feel free to do so. Mayor Patterson?
I just want to add to the West Union Street, if that's the project that we move forward on, which is the most, I think, would be the most impactful to put new sidewalks in, is there wouldn't be an assessment of the properties along there, which is what is usually done with sidewalk repairs. And in large part because there are no sidewalks in subtle stretches. There's also a hotel down there in that area. So it's, it's a much-needed improvement to the West Union Street corridor as we move out to the edge of the city limits proper.
Any other comments or thoughts on this? It sounds like, by consensus, in agreement with the administration to move forward with that project on West Union Street.
Just one last question. Since we're pretty much settled on this as a project, do you have a rough idea of what the cost will be for this one?
I can share with you that we get normally about $75,000 from CDBG, which really winds up to be more like $67,000 to $68,000 matching cost. So we will probably likely spend at least a quarter, if not a half more.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. I can briefly also advocate or support proceeding with this. I believe we also have services for veterans on the west side as well. And accessibility is huge. As Councilmember Pappy acknowledged, the Athens Photographic Project, we have some restaurants out there. I think it's important for our infrastructure. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the comments. And if there are no comments from our audience members, then we'll consider the public hearing for the CDBG project closed then. We'll move on to committee meetings. The original published agenda had stated that there would be city and safety services, but my understanding, there are not any items in that area.
Or items that are incorporated under finance and personnel or?
Okay, okay. So we'll, we'll move forward with committee, three committee hearings then. The first of which is Finance and Personnel Committee with Councilmember Reisner as Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a couple of items in miscellaneous. We have budget appropriations of the AC unit disposal, trade-in, new unit. Would the administration care to comment on the budget appropriations?
The budget appropriations are from the auditor about costs to make sure that we have everything in place for the compensation plan structure that takes effect a lot first.
I'm looking here on our file, the one I have, looking at the compensation plans and the amount of some money from the recreation center, so on, are dated May 16, 2016. I'm assuming that new data has come up since then to?
Yes.
Indicate that, for example, the Recreation Department does have the necessary funds.
That's what the auditor has indicated, that there are necessary funds. Funds are in place, they just need appropriated.
Okay. So we're in good shape?
Yep.
Anything else that falls under appropriations?
One possibility is the demo of Dalton, the house on Dalton Street, which is about $25,000 is what we're looking at for appropriations, to have the house raised.
Okay. Madam President?
And I had a question, if you can just remind me on the process of what the demolition, so it's an expense to the city. Do we eventually put that tab on to the property taxes so that the subsequent owner would pay for the costs and we're reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Because it seems like a lot of money.
It does. And I just wondered, would there be anything that would be salvageable from, from this?
In looking at it, in looking at, I've only seen photos, and, but our code director, Rex Rose, has been down through the house, and there's not anything salvageable, you know?
Okay.
Save the, the river stone chimney, other than that, it's rocks.
No bricks. That's, that's a pretty sad.
I probably would defer to the law director to see whether or not that the, anything, that we would even be able to salvage, how that would work, since this is, as you indicated right back on the property tax assessment.
Can you tell us whether the property taxes are in arrears at this point? Or how, what the position of the house's and property is with back taxes?
I do not know that.
Okay. So whether we get, I mean, if they're seriously in arrears, it may go up for a share of sale or something. But maybe they're not. And so it's just?
We can get that information for council, so that you have that.
Right. We're just addressing the, the degradation that's occurring in the neighborhood and that unsafe aspect of it.
And I have to say that I'm really happy about this, because that definitely is something that is dangerous and an attractive nuisance, and no uncertain way.
Correct. Okay. AC unit disposal and trade-in on a new unit?
And I believe this was mentioned last week by Public Works Director, Andy Stone, the explanation of this, that we have, do have some trade-in value potentially. Is that correct, I think, for the old, the old unit?
Going through a lot of paperwork here. I just know that it isn't a non-functioning AC unit, of which he would like, servicing the machine with the internal service mechanics, it's not meeting their needs. They would like to trade it in for a different one, but it is valued, is greater than $1,000, so it takes council action, council authorization. We are, of course, requesting, since we're going on recess, that if we can get this accomplished prior to the leave.
The hot part of summer?
Pardon me?
It's the hot part.
So this is an?
So you're looking at a reading on Monday, a suspension of the rules, and approval, hopefully.
I guess, on a Bella look, I would contend that most of the items tonight are, are items we're requesting to be accomplished prior to the July recess.
Well, I just want to make sure that the unit, the disposal unit, is going to, like, certified recycler, so the, whatever they use, the refrigerant, is being recycled or disposed of properly.
We'll confirm, but since it's part of a trade-in, they're usually obligated to dispose of, and it's just like your tires.
Just making sure.
It's like in my paperwork, I'm sorry. Usually I print things off, because my eyes are so bad, but I ran out of toner. Anything else under miscellaneous? I know we talked something this afternoon, but I believe that's been taken off the table, so.
Yes, maybe back when you reconvene in August, the cemetery fences, both of them need some repair, and we discussed getting some quotes on that and seeing what we can do in-house. And we're just sort of allowing, asking for additional time as we evaluate those.
In the West Union Cemetery in particular, you know, the cemetery which we own, property of Butts, county property as well, for the public health building, so we've got to work through that as well.
Is there any possibility it might get the county to chip in a little bit? Probably not.
I think someone, maybe you said it, that's good, fences make good neighbors, we'll have that discussion.
Okay. I do have something here that came from the auditor this afternoon, stating that $31,000 needs to be appropriated and transferred from 740 Water to 744 Water Debt Fund.
Pay a loan, I assume?
Yeah, the fund, so the fund balance is $11,015, there is enough to cover the debt payments. So July 1st. So an ordinance will be needed to, well, suspend and adopt it before 2:30.
I think there are two a year, two payments due in installment in July.
Let me read this exact, as raw as I can. "We will need $31,000 appropriated and transferred from 740 Water to 744 Water Debt Fund. The money is already appropriated in 744, but the fund balance only has $11,015, which is enough to cover the debt payment due July 1st, 2016. The ordinance will need to be suspended and adopted on June 20," I'm sorry, I thought it was 3, "2016." And that's from Laura, Deputy Auditor. That's all I have from the auditor on terms of appropriations.
Is that all, left finance and personnel items then, for tonight?
That's all I have.
Okay. We'll move on to Transportation Committee with Councilmember Pappy as Chair.
Thank you. When Director Stone was here, he mentioned the project at Lancaster and West State for traffic signal replacement. He's deemed this project 306, he needs an ordinance authorizing, okay, so new traffic signals at that intersection are going to cost $95,000. Seems like a lot, but I guess that's what it is. The fund is, he wants to rearrange some money here, but he needs a new appropriation of $75,000 to 220 TC 500, and he's already using some money appropriated for the other 20K. And he wants to get this rolling so that he can get the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids. And is going to be asking for the suspension as well. Bids will open on June 27th. And the push for this is because school starts at the end of August. I will say that I'm on a safety committee that was formed several years ago with Athens' city administration and the school district. And this has been a topic of conversation at many of our meetings, is the dangerous nature of West State there in front of the middle school. And there's been a lot of conversation and discussion due to the traffic, due to the nature of, of the people coming in, pickup and drop-off. There's just a lot of discussion. There was a young, there was a child hit there, running between cars to cross the street. So they're also with this, they're going to be funneling pedestrians also up to that intersection. That's the hope, that that will also improve some of that, what, what happens up there with drop-off and, and pickup. So those are the numbers.
Those numbers too, by the way, are, include not only the construction, but the engineering for this new traffic light. So it's, it's engineering and constructions, funneling everything together.
And there's some additional, with these newer lights, you can time them in certain ways. There's also right and left turn arrows and different things like that, that is more up to speed with what's needed, safety-wise, at that intersection. It's just pretty much a standard light there at the moment. So there's, there's a lot of confusion, there's a lot of activity up there. If you've had a middle school or go by there during that time of day, you know. Any other questions? Member Patterson?
Yes, has Tom Gibbs been?
Absolutely. He's part, he's part of the safety group.
Okay.
Yep. As well as the chief and some of his staff. City Council Mental Health Representative, two hats, and all the principals from all the schools.
School boards.
Yeah, usually they're a school board member. Yep. It's been a really good group.
And our safety director.
Yes. Sorry. Okay. No more questions on that. Okay. So our next item, is the parking garage. And our Service Safety Director will fill us in on, on what's happening there.
I'm, I'm here tonight just to inform you that the, the project has cost overruns. I feel like I may have said that once before. We are not done yet, but what I anticipate is when you reconvene in August, we will be close to having a closeout and wanting to close out that project. Right now, I have an estimate of anywhere from, it could be 55 to up to $100,000 cost overruns. Some are related to weather delays, that you have remobilization costs. We have yet to coat the parking garage, so that pain is still coming. Hopefully sometime in the, if not at the end of this month, during July. And I have secured from the engineers, engineer, our construction, design and construction engineer, a commitment to hold the increased costs that they've incurred from different change orders through the end of August. So it's more of an FYI, and also to inform the auditor's office, because I anticipate paying for that out of existing operating funds and not increasing the loan that we have out, so.
What was our original cost?
$2 million, which included the design and construction engineering.
Any questions? Is the elevator?
The elevator is in, is in operation, and they're still working on final. We just selected colors, that was.
Theoretically.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one operating, one to come.
So it's not arrived yet?
I did ask for, they had given me an EV cost sometime probably a year ago. Is that the right term?
It is, the charge station.
I asked for them to jog my memory on that, then I can bring that forward as well in August.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, our next item is the Ohio Development Services Grant Agreement. Those on Transportation Committee received the letter that says that they are ready to go on this project, and that would be Jobs Ohio, basically, but it's the Development Services Agency. And that was received. And so what Public Works Director is asking for is attached is a grant agreement for the $300,000 Jobs Ohio Grant for project number 302 McKinley Extension. And this is a new grant application. We've not worked in this funding with all these different pots of money before. So we're kind of moving forward with that, and we're looking to sign the LPA agreements with ODOT. We have to return it in 30 days. So we need council to act, so we need to discuss this. Now, we've discussed the McKinley extension now quite a bit, so I'm, I'm not sure, are there questions from council? Everybody fully up to speed? This is one of the last pieces of, we needed this letter to notify us we were getting this, this funding. And then Director Stone mentioned that, I believe the letter, have we received the letter from Ohio University? Because they did discuss it at their trustee meeting.
We have, we've not received a letter yet.
Okay.
But believe it's coming.
Yep. The Board of Trustees will vote on it, and I believe that's later next week.
Okay. They have procedures, just like we have procedures. So is there any other questions on that, member?
What we're doing now with the legislation we're coming forward is approving, moving the city to be able to administer the $300,000 grant, which is part of a $1.59 million project.
Right.
And when wrapped all together with all the other funding, there's actually a letter that has a fairly good description in here of what's going to happen. It's, it's in being incorporated at the same time that Athens Mold is revitalizing their facility.
Right, we have the scope of work. We have a letter from the State Controlling Board that discusses what Athens Machine and Athens Mold and Machine is going to do. And, and this assistance is to help with the, that improvement with that as well, which is why it's Jobs Ohio.
So we'll be extending McKinley Avenue.
Right.
And then we'll be putting, placing around about, at the intersection of McKinley and, and Stimson. And then an extension will run north from Mill connecting to East Stimson. And it's basically to provide what the letter states is safe access for large truck traffic.
That's right.
So a real improvement.
An improved side access.
A real improvement to that area.
An improved side access, which is.
Okay.
So this is a, an agreement that needs to be signed within 30 days of receipt, which was June 10th. So we need to move forward on this. Again, this is a road development grant of $300,000, which is mentioned.
So we'll need to suspend it when we read it next week.
It has come up for two committee meetings.
We've been discussing it for some time, so.
If anybody has any congressional discussion. Are you okay? Okay, we'll move forward. Miscellaneous, we have a visitor with us tonight, Mr. Rapp. If you'd like to come forward, we need to discuss our access issues for Athens Mobility. Generally, thank you, Lance. Generally, he comes in, Lance comes in, gives us a yearly report on what's going on, and I think there's some, few different things for the start of your application for 2017 that you want to share with us.
Yes, thank you. Again, my name is Lance Rapp, I'm the Athens Mobility Manager, which is a division of HAPCAP. And just a real quick, brief history to kind of get everybody on the same page. The mobility program is funded through an FTA ADOT grant. It's called the 5310 Program. In order to qualify for grants, you have to have a, Athens has to have a county coordinated plan, which we passed in 2008, it's done by the Vannevege Senate, and the commissioners passed it. We have to update that every three to five years, so I've already done it once, and I'm doing it again this year. HAPCAP's involvement in transportation started in 2009, when they took over Logan Public Transit. Soon after that, in 2010, we applied for the mobility position, which is my position, from the Vannevege study that was approved. And I started in 2010. Towards the end of that year, the Inter-City Royal Bus Program was presented to the city, and Alana Parha and a few other people in the staff, and Jessica and I, and we basically created the Go Bus. And soon after that, we had Carolyn Conley, who's still our Go Bus manager. The next project was in 2012, when we combined with the city to administrate Athens Public Transit, and which we had Michael Altman at the time, and he's still our manager of public transit. Later, in 2012, we formed Athens On Demand Transit, which was a partnership of the DB Council of Ohio and the Austin Path of Heritage Foundation. And Athens On Demand is still operating. Then in 2014, the last thing we did was, we separated from the community services to begin with HAPCAP and create our own transportation department. So we're really proud of the team that we all put together. We all work very well together, and I think it makes some good progress. The goal for my program still remains to be to send a contact for mobility issues in the county. And as everyone, I think, realizes, the need for transportation and solving transportation issues is probably greater than it ever been. People with disabilities, medical appointments, you know, those are the critical ones, transportation around the city, community development from a long-range plan for the city, they're just some of the things that are very important. As our society ages, people remain living in their own home as long as they can. First of all, for health reasons, they stay healthier, they're involved. And as our society has changed, the individual family caregiving unit is more in place like it was in, in older days, where you had family members that took people in. Now you have two working people, they have to take off time off the road, you know, it's, it's a lot different. The average person will live seven to nine years after their driving privileges expire. So that's, that's a big issue, and it's going to get worse. The 2017 mobility grant is due August 1st. And I realize I'm a little late coming year, but they just sent me the stuff about two weeks ago. So council has supported my program each year at the rate of $5,000 per year, and that goes toward about 20% match, and then the FTA pays 80%. In 2015, I was able to secure some outside funds, so I came to Mayor Rall at the time and said, and I'd like to not use your 2015 money transferred to 2016, which he was agreeable to. So we've basically got a free year there. This year, I'd like to request from council to consider raising it from 5,000 to 7,500. The program operates on a very tight budget, and it doesn't allow me any extra dollars to do anything for educational purposes. The program operates on a very tight budget, and it doesn't allow me any extra dollars to do anything for educational purposes, expansions, reaching out to the senior centers, and those kind of places that I'd like to. I'm also going to be asking the county promotions the same thing tomorrow. The other partners that we have is the County Board of DB and Athens Children's Services and Jobs and Family Services, as help is assured by a separate contract with Athens On Demand that allows us to pick up some dollars there. So I would like you to consider that. I'd be very happy if you approved the 5,000. I'd be tickled to death if you approved the 7,500. So if there's any questions, Michelle or anybody?
So my first question is, so you want the additional funds more for an educational PR, public relations kind of?
Promotions and be able to put out, I'd like to run some ads in the paper to kind of get people thinking about, you know, mobility and all the issues. It's not for salaries or expenses, those kind of things. It just gives me some freedom to do some extra things. And also, obviously, you understand, this little increase is more than matched by the FTA, so that we're going to end up with almost $20,000 for the program.
Counsel members?
Step aside from the President's role for a minute and step back into transportation and just make a comment from having served as Transportation Chair to thank Mr. Rapp, number one, because it's that solid, consistent kind of administration that sees a program like this grow. And yes, it's grown with city and county support, but it wouldn't have happened without your solid management of all of this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And I think it provides a really much-needed kind of service as we, you know, consider the request.
I want to echo what President Nisley said, you know, having served as the Chair on the Commission on Disabilities for four years, or serving on the committee for four years. I too, you know, am overwhelmed with appreciation for everything that you've done to grow that Athens On Demand. It's such a valuable, invaluable to those living throughout the county. I do have a question for you, though. Is an increase of $2,500, is that enough? Well, I just, knowing the impact that this makes and hearing what you are wanting to do, it's, I think, a legitimate question to ask.
I thought it was for the mobility, and, you know, the other side of the coin is you guys are very involved with Athens Public Transit and the things we're trying to do there, so I think it's a good request. And I wouldn't want to take advantage of any situation, but I appreciate your thought.
And as you said, this funding is going to be leveraged by other monies that are coming in. Which is always great. I'm always appreciative of everybody doing all they can to leverage all the money from grants and such. Thank you.
Madalena?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I have a miscellaneous.
A miscellaneous, okay. Thank you.
It's basically just another relay of information. We had discussed the J-PAC BBQ. We had discussed it maybe changing this year. There's a subcommittee that we're meeting this week and continue to meet and work, so we will be coming back in August if there is indeed a street closure, whether that changes.
It may change. In having several conversations, among which are some of our business owners in the Uptown area voicing some concerns, a lot of it legitimate. So I think the Joint Police Advisory Council is going to rethink what they will do with this Athens community engagement, or the title they have for it now. I always refer to it as the J-PAC BBQ in terms of how this goes forward. At this point in time, to share with Counsel the way the barbecue has worked in the past, it was really being financially shouldered by Ohio University's Police Department and Athens Police Department. But that's just not a sustainable way to continue an event such as this. It was upwards of $10,000, $5,000 from Athens Police Department, and $5,000 from OU PD. So it's kind of back to the drawing board for the Joint Police Advisory Council. It's a valuable event. Believe me, it's a valuable event, and something that's, we believe, has high impact, but not currently sustainable.
So I wanted to bring it forward tonight in case they do request a closure. There was some kick around at the staff today, a Friday night cruise-in, back to the same area versus impacting Quidd Street. But if they're still looking at that same date, and they may wind up looking to the spring of 2017, so...
Partnering with another event that's already taking place in the City of Athens.
I have one miscellaneous item as a council member related to upkeep. So usually in the summer, we do painting and, you know, whatever. And I'd like to ask about the West Union down there at the Mini Roundabout and whether we're going to be repainting the the design back in the street, as well as the improvements in the just the landscaping of that area.
On the circle, the Roundabout itself?
The Roundabout itself, and, you know, there are dead bushes and...
We can certainly look into that. I will say, so I'm glad you raised that question at this point, because a lot of the marking for the crosswalk has worn off. I will say this, though, is that when the markings went down, it was to look to see, one, how this is going to look. They also didn't have the typical glazing that goes on over a crosswalk, which is why it wore off so quickly. But it's something that we can certainly look at in terms of having that redone, repainted, and glazed. Have it done the right way?
Yeah, a lot of the paint has come off down there, just in general.
Sure.
But also, I would say the landscaping is in desperate need of landscaping.
It is grass growing season.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to Planning and Development Committee, and Counsel Member Fall is Chair of the...
Thank you. I'm in receipt of a Planning Commission recommendation to look at changing this code language for performance guarantee, otherwise known as bonds. This was put forward by our co-director. I guess the background of this is that the requirement in our code right now is somewhat out of line with neighboring communities with what's required of developers and construction departments, businesses, with what they put in and how long the bond is kept. And so, language was put forward, and Planning Commission put a recommendation to accept the language that was put forward, as long as the law director said that it could be done. The law director has put forward a memo stating that, yes, according to the ORC, that Athens is within the rights of changing the language. Basically, it's changing the language from keeping the bond for a set amount of time of two years and reducing that to, basically, when the construction is done, keeping, reducing the bond to 10%. And you can tell me whether this is making sense, because it's somewhat confusing. And Jeff, you went to the meetings for some of this.
Right, yeah, I did.
So what it's doing is making it in line with what the other communities in the area have. And there's still a bond required of 100%, and then it can be reduced to 10% by developers, which can be then released once the city accepts all the improvements. So it's not releasing all of the money just willy-nilly. It's like two phases, the two-phase releasing. So, do you want, do you have...
Yeah, my only concern was, when I heard about it, the Planning Commission was that we were getting a proposal to change the law of Athens by the contractor themselves, and there was no counter-arguments from anybody at the meeting, because no one was really that familiar with what is required by ORC and so on. So I stated that it would be good, as far as I was concerned, that we have a law director or someone to look over what our, you know, the State of Ohio requires us to do and see if we were in line with it. Otherwise, I really couldn't see the city changing a law that would be in violation of ORC.
Right.
I mean, there had to be a reason why the law was the way it was to begin with. No, I mean, obviously, things change. I don't know. I still like the idea of having 100% performance bond for two years, but, you know, if we go down to 10% for two years, and they say sufficient, and the law director signs off on it, I have no objection to it.
The service, the code enforcement director has included a, which I sent out, sorry, this afternoon. Late, bad, bad. A comparison chart of what other communities are...
Right.
Have requirement, and I think that this is something that has come forward in order to be comparable to other communities.
My only concern was I just didn't want to see some sort of replay of what happened with the University of States a few years ago. You know, and all that was done in good faith and so on with the previous administration, but...
Well, part of that wasn't that the bond was released. It was kind of the ownership of the bond was kind of lost. So even if there was some mess-ups there. And so that was the issue there. This wouldn't, if University of States had correct ownership of the bond, and the bond was kind of released when it wasn't supposed to be. So this wouldn't, the University of States is such a went-off sort of thing.
Hope so.
And the law director did put forward a memo.
Right, yeah, I read that, so I'm satisfied.
So we used to be at 110%?
We did.
Yeah.
We are.
Currently, yes.
We are currently 110%. I should also add that the auditor's weighed in on this as well, and she also believes that it's excessive, 110% for maintenance. It's a maintenance bond. You know, the performance bond during the build, but then after that, you know, other cities, I have that table, which you may or may not have seen, with Delaware, Ohio, New Albany, Avon, Canal Winchester, Centerville, Urbana, Lebanon. It goes from 20% down to Canton, Ohio, it's a 5% maintenance bond once construction is complete. A lot of developers, they can't, they can't secure a bond, a maintenance bond, at 110% because no one was going to sit there and give them 100%, 110% for something that's already been finished and complete in terms of a maintenance bond.
Now, I'm not seeing that this is going necessarily need suspension, or...
I can just share with you, I think that this endeavor has been underway since March. This is a miscellaneous item. But perhaps with the knowledge that this is going to come forward through Counsel, that may be enough for the developers.
I also see that we're going to have at least two more sessions within, before July 1st.
Oh, I did not know that, okay.
Well, I would think so. I think we probably will.
Through the end of June.
Through the end of June.
We just make every turn.
But, you know, that can always be put on us if we're special sessioning, so there would be two readings. Otherwise, we can hold it over till July, till August 1st.
Till August.
I'm uncomfortable with all these suspensions. I understand why a bunch of them have to go, because we are taking this. But this doesn't seem like it has an urgency with it. So that's my opinion.
So Counsel will be convening the 27th, or at least some other date after the 20th?
Correct, so that we have, we'll probably have another special session, yes, before the end of the month. But thank you.
Well, the mayor could call us all back, you know.
I could.
You could. I don't know if they want to be around.
Give me your phone number.
We know where you live, right?
That's right, because I'm going nowhere.
Okay, now, there is a, oh, I'm sorry. I would just like to ask a clarifying question for those folks who might be watching, listening out there who have no idea what, you know, bonds mean for projects like this, about the everyday implications for something like this. Clearly, we can see that there's a big discrepancy between 110% versus the much smaller percentages that some other cities have. But can you give us an example of what this means to businesses or developers wanting to, you know, do projects in Athens?
Well, there's two different types of bonds. Those are like a performance bond, which goes first. And that's like, we promised to build a road, and then the road doesn't get built to specs, and then the business goes out of business, or disappears to someplace. Those bonds are to ensure that that work gets finished to the specs of the city, so the city can accept it. Then there's this maintenance bond, so that there's always possibilities that even after the city accepts it, that there may be certain things, like the road bed wasn't built thick enough in certain areas, or there's certain things that fail, and then this helps to cover that in case the business goes out of, you know, it's like insurance for the city, to make sure that...
Paint on bridges that wasn't properly put on the bridge is peeling off. You know, we have a bridge situation like that.
And the business refuses to maintain it as per requirement.
I think ultimately, though, the idea is this is making it easier for folks to secure bonds and to complete projects. Is that not correct?
That is absolutely correct, especially for the maintenance bond. That's what we're talking about here, is the maintenance bond, which Number Fall was just addressing. I mean, I can read this, you know, verbatim, that reducing the requirement, this is from our city engineer, you know, reducing the bond requirement to accelerate to an upper level that promotes development while still protecting the city in the event a developer fails to complete the required improvements, which is exactly what Number Fall was...
So it's protecting, still protecting the taxpayers.
It's insurance.
And it also reduces the cost of the contractor, too. They have to pay something for those bonds. And the amount of, if you're going for, say, 100% bond for $1 million, that's going to cost you a lot to get that from an insurance company or a bonding company. But 10% on $1 million, that's only $1,000, so your costs are reduced. Theoretically, that should be passed on when they compute the contract to the city, but, in theory.
Thank you. Good. Any other questions? We do have one miscellaneous. It's kind of a forward sort of thing that's been coming up before the Planning Commission Thursday. This has to do with the property over on Columbus, where the Laurel's is. And I hear that Paula explained it further.
The reason I'm presenting this tonight, if I could, is that this is going before the Planning Commission on Thursday. So the Planning Commission has yet to vote, but it is a lot split, as it were. And this information is going to be presented to the Planning Commission. If we receive a successful vote, they would then want to come to Counsel, because there's an easement. And actually, the city is requiring the easement in order so that the development is responsible and has access to the flood and drainage controls, so that those are tied and carried forward through the years.
As per requirement for the development.
And again, what they're seeking is HUD refinancing, which is fairly common in the industry in terms of refinancing and being able to continue to operate the Laurel's as they are. So that's just a pending maybe to come forth.
So this is because of the flood? Can you explain that a little bit more, because of the flood?
There are flood controls with the overall property as it exists right now, which is interesting. Its zoning is different within this property, but without getting into the weeds on that, on the property itself, there is the flood controls, and then there's the residential area of the Laurel's itself. And that's the lot split to separate those apart, but still have an easement to get back to the flood control pond. flood control ponds, essentially retaining pond if need be.
And the responsibility for continued maintenance, ad infinitum, for that developed property.
Right. When they, when developed in the first place, was required.
Now, does this have anything to do with our bike trail that's being...
No.
No?
It does not.
Because that's on the edge of it.
Right. But it's not, it's not properties associated with the bike, the bike path coming through.
So that would be something that Council members could watch, depending on what the decision of the Planning Commission is. They could watch the taping of the Planning Commission on video streaming on TV, and that will give them a better background on the information.
And this, depending on what recommendation, the recommendation may come forward on Monday.
And that's why it's helpful to hear that you'll at least meet, maybe it sounds like the 27th or whatever date, so that there could be two readings and try to allow a little more level of comfortableness from Council.
And because this has to do with HUD financing and certain HUD dates, this is another one of those, they won it yesterday, sort of because of the HUD financing requirements and due dates.
That's true. And the HUD financing, too, by the way, HUD financing will only fall on an R, so it's the R1, it's not, it's not permissible for a B, at least in this parcel of property.
I just would like to make a comment that I remember when we were trying to get the easements and everything, and how long it took for R activity with that company, and now they need a quick turnaround from us. I'm not being anti-business, so to speak, I'm just saying...
It's ironic.
You know, it's ironic. Thank you.
I am trying not to compare the two unrelated activities.
Fair enough.
Simply because, yeah, going through that process and the funds that we had allowed a property owner to even be compensated for by waysman, or they could ultimately donate or what have you. So I'm trying to keep those two things separate, but I hear what you're saying.
That's the only miscellaneous that I have.
All right. If no other items for Planning and Development, we'll consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. We'll see you next Monday night.